Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Ojai City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency for July 9, 2013 to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lara?
Here.
Commissioner Clapp is not here presently. Commissioner Smith is absent this evening. Mayor Protenc Strobel?
Present.
And Mayor Blatz?
Here.
And I would like to have Councilman Lara lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You may please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, once again, thank you for being here. We've got a couple of presentations to start off our meeting tonight. And the first one, I'm going to ask Ken Peterson from Golden State Water Company to come on up and tell us what's happened. And I understand we had a problem with one of the lines today.
Yes, we did.
So a nice update would be quite welcomed.
Thank you, Mayor Blatz, Council. Yes, it started at 7:30 this morning. All night, we've been working on our transmission main with a contractor near Grand Avenue and the San Antonio Creek by our main plant site. And when we finished that work, we start filling the pipeline with water about 7:30, and the pipeline let go. So all day today, we've been working with the contractor and us, working staff-wise, to get the system back on. What happened was that the pipeline let go from the pressure, and we had to get back in there and re-forced it, et cetera. At the same time, we lost pressure in our upper area above Grand Avenue, those pressure zones. And with the help of Cacitas Water District, we were still able to, how the areas south of Grand, we're able to keep in pressure using that water. Of course, Cacitas had that same problem last year, and we helped them. So almost like it happens in this water business. For some reason, we get these situations for their water systems. So we've been working all day restoring the connection, and I can say right now, we're about there right now as we're putting water back into the system. We will take samples of the system and turn them into lab tonight to make sure things fine, and then we can lift our boil water order that we have issued with the help of, well, it's a requirement of Department of Public Health on that part of the system that was low pressure or no pressure, which is above Grand Avenue. I have actually the notice on the area affected that was passed out to our customers, not the area affected, but if you want to have a copy, I made about 15 of them here.
Okay.
Thank you.
But basically, anybody that was living south of Grand Avenue, we're fine for water supply today.
You had mentioned something about boiling the water, Ken.
Yes.
What's that about?
It's a precautionary item. When the system goes flat or no pressure, it allows opportunities for contamination that might come in from the houses, for instance, house plumbing. So we do that as precautionary. Then we add water back into the system at a higher dosage of disinfectant, that's chlorine. You smell it in our water very well sometimes. So, and we get that all through the system, but we need to take tests of the water and make sure there's no bacteria that's still, or present. Usually, that doesn't happen. So what we do is do this precautionary order, and in about 48 hours, we'll know for sure if it's safe, and then we release that order, and everybody's fine.
Now, is that just water for consumption? Or is that water for bathing, or what?
That's for consumption. For the most part, water, if you have water in your pipe still, you're all right, basically.
All right.
But if there's no water in your pipes, I would recommend that you flush your system out as soon as you get pressure back, which is happening right now, so.
Okay. All right. Does any council member have a question for Mr. Peterson?
I just had a question, Mayor Blatz. So what you have marked here as red doesn't necessarily mean that you don't have water. It's just, yeah, there's some areas that are water, and you're just advising that if you don't have water, if you didn't have water and you have water, to boil your water.
Yeah.
Okay.
For consumption.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I'll let you know that we went through the process today of doing reverse 911 emails. That we have email addresses for our customers, which ones are provided to us. And also, we have media releases, which were provided on the local media, including Star, Ventura Star, yeah. But our staff's been working all day to answer all your questions and work and get this thing back together again tonight.
All right. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
And I'm going to leave and get back to it. All right. Thank you.
We also, tonight, have a presentation, which is always nice, and we've got some questions for the fire chief, I'm sure. So Chief Mike Milkovich, if you'd come forward. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Well, the big question is, what's going to happen with fire season this year? And really, we already know. It's happened to us. It started, actually, the end of April, and is carrying as a really severe fire season. So that being said, I'm going to use this time shamefully to do a little education for you and for the folks listening. So we'll make sure that I, hey, we're working. So let's talk a little bit about fire history. Here in Ventura County, we have a storied history with fire in the areas. We've burned almost 2 million acres since 1950. And to no surprise, anybody around in 1984? And 1984, the Wheeler Fire. Over 100,000 acres burned over a many-day period affecting the city of Ojai. And then, most recently, here in May, 24,000-plus acres in Camarillo Springs during a time that we normally don't get fires. So we're going to go back to fifth grade fire behavior, except we're not going to do the fire triangle. We're going to tell you what makes fires big and what makes them dangerous in the areas that we live in here in Ojai. And it really comes down to three things. It's fuel, weather, and topography. And we should all kind of figure out, we can change some of those, we can't change others. So let's talk about the first, the fuels. Anybody recognize that picture on the council? Beautiful Yosemite Valley back in 1899. Vastly different, and this photo is slightly dated, but 1994, between the two pictures, there's something that has changed. And it's not El Capitan up there, for those of you that have hiked it. The amount of fuels that are available, these large trees in that area, we have that same thing happening here in the Ojai area. We have done a very good job protecting the city and fighting fires. With that, there's a trade-off. We have larger fuels, older fuels, and now with the drought conditions that we have, fuels that are more receptive to fire. We also have some things in the picture that we didn't have, say, 100 years ago. Whether we call them invasive species or ornamental plants, we have other species out here that burn very well. Around the homes, we have some beautiful foliage. We have non-native species that carry fire and cause problems for us. The homes themselves also cause us problems as fuels. So let's give you a snapshot of what's going on here. We look at the amount of moisture in fuels, and we rate that. And we've done it for a number of years, and if you look at the chart up here, we're going to try the laser.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, don't do that one.
[laughing]
Ah, there we go. Okay. So in this chart, Ojai is the orange line. It's hard to see. But we chart, and you can almost follow our weather and patterns with moisture and how much moisture is in the fuels. There's a difference in this year's pattern. There's a red line across the bottom. It's the 60th percentile, and we are below that level. That is the critical level of moisture in fuels that cause or propagate large fire spread. And we're below that. If you look compared to 2012, which is on the left, we did drop below that line. Historically, we don't drop below the line. The green line on both those charts stay above that critical line, but it goes all the way until mid-October. So we are dropping below critical and about three months earlier than normal, which is why we've seen these large fires. We had 19 firefighters die in Arizona for this very same type of reason. We're seeing fuels that don't normally burn, burn rigorously. So for those of you familiar, that's some arundo that's burning in a river bottom, generally lots of moisture. And yes, they can burn, but they don't burn vigorously like this. This is because the fuel moistures are way down. The other part that we can't change is weather. But what we can do with weather is we have predictive services, and we can watch weather. So I put this slide up here. It was given to me by the National Weather Service. If you go www.nws, you can get onto their page with a lot of information about local weather. It's point-and-click. There's headlines on where hazards are, where there could be red flag warnings, and it raises your awareness of what's happening out there or the potential that's out there. So for our May 31 drought that we're experiencing here, if you look kind of in the middle of Ventura County, and there's a line of Ojai, when you follow that across, normally, we would have 100% on average. We are in the 47% to 49% range, so we're basically half the moisture for this year alone. When you follow over for normal, we're just very far down on normal annual rainfalls. And it's not just us. It's the entire western United States. And we'll try the laser again. Ventura County sits right there. We are in the critical red area. We're not coming out of that critical red area this year. The winds come. We know they come. They hit Ojai in a very particular way that actually, as it comes down through the canyons, pushes fire down into the city areas. At nighttime, it kind of retreats back, again, going back to Wheeler Fire during the day. It'll get over to the next drainage and comes running down. Those are normal winds for us, but they're dangerous winds. When we have these combinations, we go into either red flag warnings or red flag watches, and it's really for awareness level that the conditions are lining up for the potential of large fire growth. And that's what we call it, large fire growth. Another thing we can't change, we have these beautiful mountains around us here. Those shapes don't change. The winds come the way they come. The terrain stays steep, and it makes it very difficult to fight fires in these areas. Even blessed with the aircraft that we have and the ability to get that support, aircraft don't put out wildfires. Aircraft check wildfires. You still need firefighters on the ground to put a line around fires. So back to the spring incident. Happened in beginning of May, and the fire burnt vigorously with the topography, so the slope and the fuels, until it got up on the top of that mountain there, right as you go into Thousand Oaks. And what was happening up at the top there were very strong winds. As soon as the winds caught that fire, it drove it within an hour, three, approximately three miles to CSU CI with very little warning for them. It's just indicative of the fire behavior that we're seeing. So going back to Simi Valley, another 120,000-plus acre fire. It's not a matter of, are we going to have enough fire? It's really, when and where is it going to hit us? So here's my shameless attempt. We really need to talk about wildland fire preparedness, and our approach is the Ready, Set, Go program. In front of you, I think you have a CD and a flyer. This is a nationally accepted program. Actually, former fire chief Bob Roper, who's a resident of Ojai, was the driving force in this program. Nationally accepted now, and it's something that we need our constituents, our people on the, in the houses, the property owners, we need them to help us. And this is a nice way to do it. The program is set up with checklists, and it really is all about raising that situational awareness, or what we call SA, of what's going on around them. So it starts out, Ready, Set, Go. Ready is get that situational awareness. Set is you're prepared when there's fire, and Go is when, one is you're being asked to leave, or two, you don't feel comfortable or unable to stay. And then with these checklists. And we want to take that inside-out approach. And I say inside-out approach is we need the homeowners to do their part so that the firefighters can do their part, and that all the rest of the infrastructure can help around that. So easy checklist you go through, yes, no. You check them out, and then we work towards each of these areas. So here's a picture of the spring fire again, and you can see a couple of things that worked very well here. One is you can see the ribbon of the fire hazard reduction, what we sometimes used, or what we used to call weed abatement, but you have a defensible space around this track of homes. The other thing is, this is a newer community in the Dos Vientos area of Thousand Oaks, newer construction. It is more sustainable as far as fire impingement, and we have no loss of structures in these types of areas. The defensible space, I want to talk about that. We do a very nice job with defensible space. In the Ojai area, as of today, we're just about 99% compliant. We have a few outstanding. We're still working with those citizens. And as you know, those that cannot comply on their own get a little bit of help. We'll bring in a contractor. There are some additional fees for administrative work, but we get that 100-foot clearance on all the properties that we deem needed. And those are anything within 500 foot of a open wildland area. But we need, those should be minimums. We really should be preaching to folks, the 100-foot is just barely what you need when you live on a slope. You need more. When you have ornamentals around your house, we need to clear them. Again, this is just a checklist to help. This actually is the Condor Sanctuary, so a little bit to our east here, but with good defensible space, with good protection around those structures, when the ranch fire moved through this area, no structure loss in a very remote area with basically no water. They had one fire truck up there, and we had no loss. Lastly, on emergency access, again, we will look down these points. This helps us with a wildland fire, but this is also just good business for, if you had a medical emergency, if you needed help, if you needed the water company at your house, if you follow these types of checklists, it makes them most accessible. And here's an area where there's actually a driveway leading back there. We need that access, and we need the homeowners to help us with that. So I took all that time to really answer your question of, what's the real potential out here? So given the drought conditions that we have, given the known fact that we're going to have our normal winds, and the topography hasn't moved, we have a higher potential for large fire growth and extreme fire behavior. So what do we do with it? We need to be risk managers. We need to do our jobs, and it has to be a multi-pronged approach. We have to be in this together. So there are engineering factors that we can do. Fire behavior modification would be fuel reduction in areas. FHRP by our homeowners. Home hardening, and when we talk about home hardening, is making your house less susceptible to ember wash that happens during wildfires. We have enforcement, FHRP. We know enforcement isn't a great way to do business. We need to build incentives in. We have education. So I'm here today doing a little bit of that. But we have programs that are available to community groups, and I'll use the Ready, Set, Go program, where we go through this item by item. We'll even go out to a person's house and help them look at each of these aspects. Below there, there's two pictures of Matilah Canyon, so close to us. A homeowner's group in Matilah Canyon decided, because of their access issues, they wanted to know what they could do for a safer area to be in. They came up with about a four-acre piece of property. And on this picture, and it's hard to tell, but this area was heavy brush. In cooperation, we came in with some heavy equipment. We made a, what is called a temporary refuge area. It's an area that you could go to if you were trapped in the canyon when a fire comes through, and an area that I would never call it a safety area, but a, the safest place they have in that canyon now. And it's the best they could do. I want to let you know, emergency response, we are ready. We're, you know, by this time, all of our pre-fire season training is done. We are monitoring the weather. We have pre-plans. We're ready to roll, but we don't want to have to exercise that part of the, of the help. And then lastly, economic incentives. And I put fines down there. Fines aren't a good way to do business. We need to find other ways to incentivize this type of work. And one obvious way to do it is, you know, those tax dollars that we save by not having to fight fires, councils like you can use and reallocate for other important pressing So with that, any questions?
Any questions of the council?
Thank you, Chief Ford. It's an excellent presentation. I think it's really important for us to educate ourselves on how to prevent fires. I'm just wondering for the public where we could get this, because it's really good information. I skimmed through it, and it has a lot of other checklist, getting ready, just in case. Where could, where could the public get this pamphlet?
Sure. I left, some of the flyers I left out on the front desk here, and I had a very few CDs left over. But if you contact any of the local fire stations, they can get this information, you know, to the homeowners and your constituents.
Any questions from staff? Any questions from the public? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have any from out there, I hope we have dusted like right there.
We are here to help you.
Okay. Water, water. It's iffy, I'm just saying.
Thank you, Chief Milkovich. That was great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our next item, we have a proclamation. And I understand, I see Randy Haney there. Come on up. Randy, I've got a proclamation for the Park and Recreation Commission. So, let me read it, and then you can come up and get it. And then you're here to talk about the commission, if you'd like, as well. All right. This proclamation is from the city of Ojai, and it says, "Whereas parks and recreation makes lives and communities better, and whereas parks provide access to the serenity and the inspiration of nature as well as outdoor spaces to play and exercise, and whereas parks preserve and protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community, and whereas recreation fosters human development, providing positive alternatives for children and youth during non-school hours to reduce crime and mischief, thereby helping children and youth develop and grow into healthy and productive adults, and whereas parks and recreation offers places, spaces, and programs that facilitate social connections, human development, therapy, the arts, and lifelong learning, and whereas our parks and recreation strengthens community image and sense of place and increases cultural unity, and whereas park and recreations provide opportunities for directed and self-directed activities which encourage healthy movement, and whereas thousands of California children, adults, and seniors benefit from a wide range of services, facilities, and programs, including gymnastics, tennis, and Ojai Day, provided by the city of Ojai's Recreation Department, and whereas the city of Ojai urges all its residents to recognize that park and recreation enriches the lives of its, of its residents and visitors as well as adding value of life to the community's homes and neighborhoods. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Paul Blatz, the mayor of the city of Ojai, and on behalf of the city council hereby proclaim that parks might make life better in the month of July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month, and in doing so, urge all our citizens to use and enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities. And it's dated this ninth day of July in the year 2013. It's signed by me and Rhonda Basori, our city clerk. So Randy, on behalf of the city council and the citizens, I want to present this to you as the chairman of the Park and Recreation Commission. There you go.
I'll say a few things. Thank you for this. I'll pass this on to the Recreation and Parks Department. And just briefly, thank you all for all the consideration and all of moving forward for the Recreation and Parks Department coming this fiscal year. So Robert, thank you. Savaro, thank you. Paul and Carol, Carolyn, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Do you have any other report from the commission tonight, or?
We took them off.
Okay. Probably deservedly. I don't see any other commissioners. Is there someone here?
Mr. Mayor, Craig Walker's here from.
Oh, Craig. I saw you outside. I didn't know you were going to be here from the Historic Preservation Commission, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Craig Walker. I'm with the city's Historic Preservation Commission. At its last meeting, the commission reviewed a design review permit and CUP permit for some cosmetic changes to the old firehouse building, now a wine tasting establishment for Ojai vineyards. The firehouse is Ventura County Historic Landmark Number 62. The only issue was the new window design for the openings where the original garage doors were located. Some commissioners felt that the new window design should be faithful to the period when the building was constructed, which in this case was the 1930s. Others felt such windows only need to complement the building. In the end, we didn't find the applicant's proposed windows to be incompatible with the original design or to violate preservation standards. The commission recommended approval of the project. While discussing the firehouse, Commissioner Hill noted that the firehouse building was approved by the Ojai City Council as a county landmark back in 1980. This was because the city had no Historic Preservation Commission at the time, and so landmarks were designated by the county. Now that the city has its own Historic Preservation Commission, we believe the firehouse should be included in the city's own landmark list. The old firehouse is Ojai's only building created as a Depression-era WPA project. It was built by unemployed Ojai Valley workers during the Depression using WPA funds. Berkeley Brant, a noted Midwest architect who moved to Ojai in 1923, designed the building. He was Ojai's first commissioner to the Ventura County Fire District formed in 1925. This information will all be reflected in a new plaque designating the structure as City Landmark Number 21. You can read more about the history of the old firehouse and the other firehouses through Ojai's history at www.ojaihistory.com. The Historic Preservation Commission was very happy that the council approved funding support for the Ojai Valley Museum. We could not carry out our work without the museum and its historic resources. We also appreciate the budget given to the commission to further its own work, not to mention the considerable staff time allocated by the city. The Historic Preservation Commission is now working on a draft zoning ordinance that will soon come before the council. This ordinance, if approved, would provide for a historic review of any demolition permit requested for a structure on the city's list of priority historic sites. And this was the list of the 37 that we showed in the slideshow some time back. The commission is also finalizing its survey of heritage trees within the city. Before, there was a town here. This general area was known as White Oak Flats because of the forest of white oaks that covered the area. The Historic Preservation Commission has teamed with the city's Tree Committee to recognize and protect as many of Ojai's heritage trees as possible. There will be about 10 trees in the list we will submit to the council. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions in the council, Craig? Just keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other commissioners here tonight for any reports? I don't see anyone. All right. We'll move on to our public communications portion of our agenda. Public communications is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the council on items that are not part of our scheduled agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council, but will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, we are not allowed to take any action on items brought up tonight. Persons wishing to address the council are requested to fill out a speaker's card prior to the council reaching this part of the agenda, and comments must be limited to three minutes or less. And I have two speakers cards tonight. The first one is Deborah Mo. Welcome.
Thank you. Deborah Mo, Ojai, downtown. I'm here to talk about my favorite place, the skate park. I've gotten a lot of calls lately. I have been aware that there is a lot of bikes and a lot of scooters in the skate park, and it doesn't seem like it's being addressed. It's chipping, it's, we didn't raise the money for bikes and scooters, and there are rules posted outside the skate park saying, "No bikes or scooters." And I know that it might come down to picking your battles, but recently Santa Barbara's Skate Park on the harbor has been closed. They've closed it for a week due to vandalism, nonsense, bikes, and other stuff. And I've gotten calls, because, you know, I worked on that committee for 15 years with other people in town, and the kids know me, and they call. And the bikes and scooters are kind of more aggressive, and the, some of the little guys that are skating are being pushed out. So I'm just here to make aware, I know that this isn't the first time that this has come up, but, I mean, we have rules, and I guess maybe it's something like, you know, there's also rules for bike helmets. I know that they have been ticketing for no helmets in the, in the skate park. I think it falls under the, under the umbrella of safety. We didn't raise the money for bikes and scooters. We did, at one point, ask, I can't think of the name of the bike group, the, that races bikes. We did, at one point, ask them to join us, and they declined. So, anyway, that's what I just wanted to talk about. I think it's important. I think the rules were made, and it is a park governed by Parks and Rec, and I know that Parks and Rec has been notified. I don't know what'll come of this, but I just feel it's very important. And when kids and other mothers call me, call other people, I think it's time to do something. Thank you.
Mo, what do you suggest be done? I mean, what happens, what happens when there's adults there that see this? What do they do?
Well, some of the adults are there with their kids that have the scooters and bikes. And, you know, I addressed one mother, and blip, blip. It, it wasn't a pleasant scene. And I, I feel that, and I'm a mom. I know that kids need a place. This is a fun place. I don't know what the answer is. I know that the rules were made, the rules are posted, they're not being enforced, and I don't know. Let the bike people raise money for a course for them somewhere. I mean, we raised a lot of money, and we put in a lot of work for skating. People come from LA on the weekends. Saturday morning, that park is packed from people out of town. Now, when the older skaters are there, there's not a problem, because it's, you know, they can enforce. But kids, you know, they can be intimidated by the bigger kids, by the bikers. So I, I really don't know what the answer is, other than putting the hammer down. I mean, enforcing the rules, you know, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Strobel.
Mo, is, is there a time of day or a particular day of the week that this is more prevalent?
In the afternoon, you know? Well, it's summertime, so kids are staying up late, sleeping in. So it's usually in the afternoon, after like 1:00, from 1 till, I guess it closes. When I have gone by, I'm trying to think, I have chickens, so I go to feed my chickens at the East End, and it's usually around, when I go by, from 2 till 4 or whatever, and you go by, you want to address the kids, they don't want to hear it. You're not my mother, you know?
And so there isn't a particular day that's?
No, I don't think there is. I know that, like I said, in the morning, on the weekends, when there is a strong adult skating group, there's no problem. So, you know?
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, we have Mr. McClary as well as Randy Haney here. I think that maybe we ought to have it go before the Park and Recreation Commission and see what kind of suggestion they might have for the problem.
Sure, we'd be glad to do that.
Okay. All right. The next speaker card is Deborah Pendry. Welcome, Deborah.
Deborah Pendry, we're presenting the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and the Coalition in partnership with Santa Barbara-based Community Environmental Council kicked off its second Solarize Ojai Valley program this morning with a press conference at the home of Planning Commissioner Troy Becker and his wife, Jerry. Troy shared his system paid for itself in six years, and he has seen a savings of $15,000 in the last three years since the payoff. Supervisor Bennett and Mayor Blatts generously also came out and spoke on behalf of the program and our organizations. Our first time doing this program last year garnered six, excuse me, five new solar installations, even though we did it going right into the holiday season and only offered it for two months. I mentioned to Mayor Blatts, we hope to double that number, and being the visionary he is, he told the audience, there wasn't any reason for us not to do tenfold that number. So I appreciate the enthusiasm and the challenge you have set before us. Solarize Ojai Valley this time around will be a three-month program running July 9th to October 9th. It's a group purchasing program designed to make going solar easier and more affordable for Ojai Valley homeowners. If any homeowners watching have an interest in going solar, we encourage you to attend one of the introductory workshops hosted by the CEC and the Coalition, where they will learn about energy efficiency, energy conservation, solar energy, and the Solarize Ojai program. We'll be at the Chaparral Auditorium Tuesday, July 23rd, the Oakview Park and Resource Center Thursday, August 15th, and the Ojai Grange Hall on September 17th. And all of these details can be found on the solarizeojai.org website. Or you can pick up a flyer. We have these at City Hall during business hours, and when you're there, you can see our nifty solar exhibit. To apply for Solarize Ojai, homeowners can also go to solarizeojai.org for a simple five-minute application process, and they will then be contacted and, and shown, discuss the process and expectations. We also have information on facebook.com/cecsolarize. Finally, I wanted to share that my husband and I just turned on our new solar system, and it's a wonderful thing to immediately see the meter start running backwards, offsetting the time it will be running forward when the sun isn't out. Now, we did our system as a do-it-yourself, and it turned out not to be an easy feat. But we were pleasantly surprised. We live in the county, and when I called to get information on the steps we needed to take, I braced myself for what the permit was going to cost. Turns out, the county doesn't charge for solar installation. Not only that, you don't charge, your property taxes don't go up for it, yet it increases your property value pretty substantially. So that was quite the news to find out. So, as food for thought, I'd like to pose to the city the idea that permitting be based not just on perhaps required staff time and what the market will bear, but also include a sustainability factor. Presently, the city fee has a ceiling of $500 for a solar permit, depending on the size, but according to staff, it stays really close to that $500 ceiling. So I'd like to suggest there is some wiggle room here. If the project decreases the property's carbon footprint, the price goes down to the permit. If the project increases the property's carbon footprint, the price goes up. That reminds us to put a value on what and how we humans do business. Thank you, and let's go solar Ojai Valley.
Thank you, Deborah. I was interested in talking with Steve Bennett today to find out, the county doesn't have a permit fee for the installation of solar panels. And it seems as though we in Ojai that are constantly trying to improve our quality of life and protect our natural resources, that we should really consider something less than the $500 permit.
We'll bring that back to you, then.
I don't have any other speaker's cards. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address us on non-agendized items? Yes, Randy?
I want to, hi, Randy Haney, 513 Pleasant Avenue. I just want to continue my discussion on the Libby Bowl, and I just would like to say something that I didn't say a month ago. I want to see it succeed. That's the most important thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion for approval, or if anyone wants to pull any of the items, we'll do that.
I move to approve the consent calendar 1A through 1H.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. Moving on to the first part, the first public hearing, item number two on our agenda is text amendment to the Ojai Municipal Code amending section 10-2.1609 of the city zoning ordinance for revised standards of, for certain banner signs, TA 13-01. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Mr. Mulane will make a staff report on this.
Mr. Mulane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'll be brief for this item tonight. Staff has brought forward for council consideration an amendment to the city zoning ordinance that provides for revised standards for certain banner signs, not all of the banner signs, but certain special ones. The change to the zoning code would allow longer and more frequent displays of banner signs for programs and events related to fine arts, theater art, and music. Planning Commission reviewed a draft of this ordinance amendment at a public hearing on June 19th of this year, and the Planning Commission recommended some minor revisions to the draft ordinance, and those are now reflected in a revised ordinance, which is included as Attachment A. And the Planning Commission's resolution recommending that the city council approve the ordinance, which was approved unanimously, unanimously, is included as Attachment B. As part of the adoption of the revised fee schedule, the city council approved a reduced fee for 20, of $25 per banner for these specific types of banners. So that change is already taken in place. It's not part of your action tonight. Your action tonight is just to introduce the ordinance and to pass it on to second reading as, as set forth in the staff and the administrative report. And I'd be happy to go through in a little bit more detail what the change is that the Planning Commission made, but they were, they're pretty minor clarifications to the ordinance. It's a pretty simple ordinance, and I think it meets the intent that the council set forth just a couple of months ago.
Thank you, Mr. Mulane. Any question of staff by the council? No? No? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to address us on this item? Seeing no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Does that move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll bring it back to council for any discussion or a motion.
I mean, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I think that you address the issues that came up, and they're pretty straightforward. So I move to introduce ordinance number?
830.
830, which would make revisions to Article 16 of Chapter 2 of Title 10, the city signage regulation for certain banner signs, asking the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance and to approving a motion to waive further readings of the ordinance and pass it to a second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ordinance number 830, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Ojai, California, amending the Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10-2.1609, standards for specific types of signs related to business banner signs. Laura?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. Moving on to our second public hearing, this is a citizens' option for public safety funding for fiscal year 2013-14. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is an ongoing grant program, commonly known as the COPS program, and under this grant program, California cities receive a varying amount of money based on their population, but the minimum amount, which comes to small cities such as us, is $100,000 a year. And this money must be used for additional police services, not for base-level police services. And so, as has been the case in the past, the Sheriff's Department is recommending that about half of it be used for the sheriff's service technician, which is the person who generally greets you at the front counter when you go to the police station, and the other half for the special enforcement detail. And that's over time, that's used for a variety of special enforcement tasks. One of the tasks that we've been very involved in, and Sergeant Arthur in particular has been quite involved in, is working with the arcade merchants to address people who are loitering and causing problems, especially overnight and early in the morning in that area. So we're recommending that the money be allocated to those two purposes.
Okay. You have anything to add to that, Sergeant Arthur? It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too, Mayor. One of the programs that we also use that for is the part-time school resource officer, which really is very impactful for us getting connection with the youth in the city, and so that's been very helpful. The money is used only in the city and to prevent crime and to, you know, basically have community input.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of, from, to staff by the council? No?
I just have a comment. It's, it's great to see that there's programs like this in the City of Ojai. We, we overlook the fact of, sometimes we do have some delinquency here with juveniles, and to see that we, we still dedicate and we're still giving them an opportunity to turn around, it, it makes me happy that we get this grant and we're able to help the, the police department. And it just, real quick, I was just wondering if you could elaborate exactly what you do with game, game intervention and juvenile crime suppression? Is there a certain program, or is that, would that be better suited to go and look on the website, or?
Well, most of that is, is going to be education and for the parents, so we try to work with the parents quite a bit. The school resource officer, we converted to just really basically one person who has training and background as a school resource officer. We're very fortunate to have that in Ojai right now, and that's Senior Deputy Ed Bouvet. He works at the school and develops a relationship, and a lot of times, he can catch the kids before they really get involved in the gang, or if he can do some preventive. But a lot of that has to do with connecting with the parents and trying to get early intervention if possible. But anyone that's concerned about that, they could certainly call the station, ask for myself or Ed Bouvet, and would be glad to address any issues or help any parents.
That's great. Thank you, Sergeant.
Anything else? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on this particular agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 13-?
34.
Allocating available citizens' options. ...allocating available citizens' options for public safety funds for fiscal year 2013 through 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Latt?
Yes. Moving on to our discussion items, item number four is the 2012 Annual Audited Financial Statements and the Single Audit for the City of Ojai. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. As you know, every year, the city has its financial records reviewed by an independent auditor to confirm that they're accurate and to confirm that we have the proper controls in place. Also, as a management practice, we change auditors periodically so that we have a different set of eyes looking at our books to provide even more security and more transparency as far as our finances go. So this year, Ron Levy, CPA, was our auditor for the first time himself, and he's here to review with you the audit and the single audit and answer any questions you have. While he's coming up, I would note that he also spent about two hours with the city's finance committee going over this information in detail. So, thank you.
And I'll just add, welcome, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you again.
That Councilman Laura and I sit on the finance committee, so we had an opportunity to go through the annual audit in quite detail, two hours or more. You're going to be getting the abridged version of that tonight, but I can assure you that the audit was very thorough, and we thank Mr. Levy for all his efforts in that regard.
Thank you. Okay, first off, it was a pleasure doing the audit for you this year. You have a very good staff, very helpful. We asked a lot of questions, and they were very helpful getting us the answers, showing us where things were kept. Went very smooth, the audit. So you know, an audit that we do is a financial audit, and we look at internal controls and procedures, and we make sure the staff is following procedures. So we test transactions, make sure procedures are being done correctly, and they are. Okay? And the numbers in the audit report that you have, we confirm a lot of the numbers. Bank balances, we will confirm balances with the bank. Bond balances, confirm with the bond holder, you know, US Bank or whoever it is. We will look at payables, make sure the payables are accurate. Receivables, make sure you collect your receivables. So these numbers are accurate. Okay? We give you an opinion, which is found on page one and two of the audit report, the bigger audit. Okay? The auditor opinion that you guys considered a clean opinion. Clean opinion is the highest opinion that we can give. Basically, it says these numbers are accurate. Okay? They're not, you know, they could be off a little bit, but they're accurate numbers. Again, our audit, we don't look at every transaction. We still, we would be here forever. We sample transactions, again, to make sure things are being done properly. Okay, one thing I'd like to point out, I'd like to point out a couple of items in the audit report which I always like to look at. The MDNA on pages, this is done by staff, pages three through 14. If you have a chance, read these pages. Lot of information in here, comparisons between years, what's going to happen, you know, what staff thinks is going to happen in the future. Very good information. Only concern this year on this is that the RDA went away January 31st. So we have seven months of RDA in this audit, and we're comparing last year numbers, 12 months of the RDA in there. So it's a little hard to compare some of the numbers. Other than that, always read the MDNA, very useful. If you go in the notes to financial statements, another useful piece of information, there's a lot of pages there. That starts on page 30 and goes all the way through 57. So a lot of pages, but it does explain back up to the numbers in the audit report. And if you go to page 40 for a second, I always find this to be interesting. You will see on the bottom part of page 40, the city has under its control $5.5 million. Of that amount, 5.5 million is invested, only 5,900 is held in a money market account. Okay, meaning you are, I'm sorry, the money is invested well, it's in state, it's in LAEF. And if you go to page 39, you will see your bank account, your checking account, which doesn't earn anything, only had $99,000 in there. So again, you're investing the bulk of your money in LAEF, which is a very good investment. It's safe, it's a money market account in a way. You can pull it out anytime you like. So I'm glad to see it's not the opposite way. I've been in some cities where they keep 5 million in the checking account and 100,000 invested. And I know right now you're looking at me and saying, "Well, banks and LAEF, it's only paying .2% or .15% or whatever it is," but the practice is solid, what you're doing. Interest rates will come up eventually. Don't know exactly when, but they will. As long as you continue this type of cash management, you will be fine. So again, it was very nice to see that. Another item I like to look at is on page 59 and 60, which is your general fund, which is the heart of the city, and budget to actual comparisons. And the nice, one of the things I'd like to see and that you are doing is on the left-hand columns, there are budget columns, the original and the final, the numbers are changing, meaning that you have a staff that sees things happening and are coming to you and saying, "We need to amend the budget. We need to correct the budget." Okay, so they really have a good feel for what's going on. And that's something, you know, if you look at the over/unders, it's not that bad. It's very accurate. So that also tells me you're getting accurate information from staff throughout the year. And that's good, because I go to some cities and they have no clue how they're doing. So you have a good staff here. They do have, they do know what's going on here. They're on top of it. And the smaller report I gave you is a single audit report. This is when you have, when you spend more than $500,000 in federal funds, you have to have what they call a single audit report, compliance and financial information on federal funds. Like to say, you know, if you go to page... Three, you will see your federal funding for the year. Most of it was for the transportation function of the city, and a lot of that was capital money that you used for trolleys that you purchased during the year. It's our money. Our money has gone away. You won't see that too much in the future. Maybe just a couple of dribbles, but it's basically gone. From there, we looked at those expenditures, make sure that money was spent for what it was entitled to, to be spent for. Everything came out fine. So the federal funds were fine, the federal government is going to be happy with you. We did have one little finding on page eight, and it's not a federal finding, it's a financial finding, and this just had to do with fundraising, cash receipts, which is normally a problem. As I told the finance committee, when you have fundraisers, the people handling the money are not trained accountants, most of them are volunteers. They're gonna, not, some of the controls are not going to be as tight. So basically what we're saying is, in this area, we would like to see it get tightened up a little bit, and maybe a little bit more training of the volunteers as to how to handle these funds and these fundraisers, and that's what we, that was our finding. So, but other than that, it was a pleasure doing the audit. Any questions you may have?
Just with regard to your last comment with the fundraising, how much money are we really talking about there?
In the Ojai days, Rob, you know offhand?
This had to do with selling, we sold bottled water, and we weren't keeping tickets for each sale, and I'm not sure how much that was, but it's a fairly small amount.
It wasn't that much. It was, you know, maybe, you know, it wasn't hundreds of thousands of dollars. The small, you know, how many bottles of water can you sell in a day? But just the idea that we, they weren't really tracking the sales.
As far as a general comment, is there anything that we as the council need to be concerned about in terms of the financial management of our city?
The thing is, is what I always tell councils is, you have to get money put aside for future projects. And to do capital budgeting constantly for the future, figure out how much we're going to need in the future to repair buildings, repair streets, how much we need to put aside and try to set up funds, you know, that are specified for future capital. Because the way I see it, and just me, is grant money is drying up. It's been drying up over the years. Federal funds, our money has gone away now. State money, even though the state's coming back a little bit, I don't think I'll see a lot of capital grants out there. It's just the idea, you have to do it yourself. You can't rely on federal or state government to help you out anymore. So I always say, try to, and I know we've talked about this in the finance committee, that you are trying to put money aside and you are budgeting the best you can for the future capital needs of the city. But the day-to-day operations, I think you have a very good handle on.
Did you, did you draw an opinion as to whether or not, given the amount of our general fund and how much we budget, that we're putting aside an adequate amount for our future capital expenditures?
I always want to see more, but set aside if we can. But I think you're, I think the idea is, you have, you're, I think this year you set the fund up, and so we will set it aside.
Right.
And I think that's important. You do have that rainy day fund set up inside the general fund. But I think to put money aside in a capital fund and to really start naming some projects where that money is going to go will help be in the future.
And I think we're doing that now, aren't we?
Yeah, that's right. The, I think the best practice in this area is to have a five-year plan like we do, and to look out and see what the capital needs are for five years and then budget towards that amount. So we've been, we set aside $440,000 in this year's budget and a little bit less in the prior year's budget, and a little bit less the year before, and we're kind of ramping up as our TOT grows. So I think the, in the neighborhood of $650,000 or $700,000 a year is what we really need to keep up with the streets and the other facilities.
Is that just from an auditor's standpoint? Does that appear to be a reasonable amount?
I haven't really looked at the capital budget that close, but it seems like a good start. Because I realize, I mean, your total expenditures in the general fund were eight, were 7.3 million. So if you can put 400,000 and 700,000 aside a year, I think that's very good.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Levy?
No.
No? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think it was enjoyable doing the audit for you.
Thank you. This was a discussion item. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us? Seeing no one, we will now adjourn as the Ojai City Council and reconvene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency, and I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move to... To approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Latt?
Yes. We have two discussion items within the Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency. The first one is a resolution of the City Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency approving the Long Range Property Management Plan. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the Successor Agency Board. Last year, the state government approved a bill called AB 1484, and one of their primary motivations for adopting that bill was to balance the state budget. And one of the ways in which they balanced the state budget was to sweep money away from redevelopment agencies. So that bill set up a process where they rolled back the effective date of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, required independent reviews by outside auditors to determine how much money was involved in that rollback, and then looked at how much money was obligated for recognized obligations and how much money was left over, and just took all that money away and made us give it to the auditor controllers in each of the counties, who in turn used it to fund all the taxing agencies within the counties. But to the extent that they funded education, which is about 50% of the money, it really relieved the state of the burden of funding education. So this sweep occurred, but there was a political trade-off in that bill, and the political trade-off was, once the sweep occurred, there were some benefits that go to the former agencies. One benefit is that to the extent that we own land, we are able to prepare within six months of our certification, a long-term management plan for that land, and if that long-term management plan is approved by you, by the Oversight Board, and not objected to by the Department of Finance, then we get to use that property in accordance with the plan. So we only have one piece of property, that's the piece of property on Montgomery and Franklin that we bought for affordable housing, and of course, you recently applied the overlay to that, and so our long-range plan says that we will use that for low and moderate income housing. And so we do have a resolution here for you to consider that would adopt the plan.
Okay. Any questions, or Mr. Clark?
Just a real question, a quick question. How difficult do you foresee the state approving the Long Range Property Management Plan for this property?
I'd be extremely surprised if there's any objection. We have a very straightforward situation, land that we bought for housing that we intend to use for housing. Across the state, there's a lot of land that was bought for a lot of different purposes that may be more controversial, but I think in our case, it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? This is a discussion item. I don't see anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments, so I'll bring it back to council for further discussion, questions, or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number RDSA...
13-3.
...approving the Long Range Property Management Agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Latt?
Yes. Next discussion item is item number seven. It's a resolution of the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency Board, finding that money's loan to the Ojai Redevelopment Agency was for legitimate redevelopment purposes and applying to the Oversight Board to confirm this finding. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. So another benefit that we get after the sweep is that the successor agency can reinstate loans between the successor agency and the city that formed the redevelopment agency in the past. This item has been before the city council and the Oversight Board before. It was approved, I should say it was, the city council sitting as the successor agency, it was approved by both bodies, and then the Department of Finance has 45 days within which it can object, and on the 45th day, they did object. And so they referred it, they referred the city loan back to the Oversight Board. And they had a couple of issues, some which were stated in their some which were stated in their letter, and some which were stated to us verbally after we received the letter. One was that they felt we were premature, because we had approved it before the sweep had been certified. Secondly, they said that we didn't provide enough documentation. And when we pressed them on that, I, I think that we probably could have provided more documentation, but I think they also kind of ran out of time reviewing the documentation that we did provide. But they did raise a third issue, which is quite troubling, and which I think will be very troubling on a statewide basis. And that is how to apply interest which is provided for such loans under the, under the AB 1484. What, what that law says is that you're supposed to recalculate the loan from its inception using the rate for the local agency investment fund, LEAF. And that would, if done on a year-by-year basis, for example, using the LEAF rate in 1980 for the loan as it stood in 1980, and using the rate in 1981 that stood at that time, and so on and so forth, that would very accurately reflect the amount of money that we would have received if we had kept the money and not lent it to the agency. And that seems very fair and very logical, and like, that must be what they intended when they adopted the bill. And so that's how we recalculated our interest. But what they're saying is that, no, you should use the LEAF rate today, which, as Mr. Levy pointed out, is practically nothing, point oh-one-whatever, which would reduce the amount of our loan considerably. And so in trying to decide how to move forward, our special counsel and our city attorney, who accesses the council to the Oversight Board, suggested that we break this matter into two parts. Under the law, really, the role of the Oversight Board is to determine whether the money that was loaned to the agency was used for legitimate redevelopment purposes. So that's the only thing that's addressed in this resolution. Was or was the money loaned for legitimate redevelopment purposes? And actually, you, you made that determination before when you approved the loan, and so did the Oversight Board. But we think that if the Oversight Board, after you approved this resolution, approves a similar resolution, there won't be any grounds for the Finance Department to object. Then, as a second step, we will put the loan on our next ROBS, and we will calculate the interest to generate the amount of money that the Oversight Board approved, which was 5.2 million. And if the Finance Department objects to it at that time, there's a, there's a meet-and-confer process that we can go to. So we have a different way of trying to resolve it. We did go to meet-and-confer on one item in the past, and they actually ruled in our favor, which was quite a surprise, but a pleasant one. But that was only a $250,000 matter, and this is more like a $3 million matter. But even if they don't approve the loan ultimately through the meet-and-confer process, that would still put us in a position to join with other cities who have been treated just as poorly, to try and resolve this through a legal process. So the recommendation today is simply to make an application to the Oversight Board to find that these were for legitimate redevelopment purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any questions, Mr. Clark? No? It's a discussion item, but I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to discuss it. So I'm going to bring it back to the successor agency for either questions, comments, or a motion.
I have no questions. I think it's straightforward. But I'm ready to move to adopt Resolution Number RDSA...
Thirteen dash oh-four.
Oh-four. Thirteen dash oh-four, finding that money loaned to the, to the Ojai City Redevelopment Agency was for legitimate redevelopment purpose, purposes, and applying to the Oversight Board to confirm this finding.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatt?
Yes. All right, we're going to adjourn as the successor agency, reconvene as the Ojai City Council. Reports from council members. Councilman Laura, do you have anything to report tonight?
I, I just have to report that I joined City Manager Rob Clark on the webinar today. And I just want to say how there's so much bills presented state-level by our Assembly and our Senate. And it, it was just an eye-opener to see how those bills could potentially affect what our local government has the power to do. And I just thought it was, it 's just interesting how it is important for us to work with our local representative from, from Senate to Assembly to Congress. And it just mirrors, and I, I support Mayor Protem Strobel's comments yesterday about trying to work with him. I see them pouring. So that's my only thing.
Okay. Mayor Protem Strobel, anything tonight?
Just to let the public know, in case you missed it, we had a joint meeting last evening between the Planning Commission and the Ojai City Council to begin discussing the fill cycle of the housing element, update of the housing element. It was, we have a really good consultant. I thought we had some excellent comments from all the participants. And I'd like to encourage members of the public to get involved with the process now, as opposed to waiting until we're ready to file, and then bringing up all the issues that, that we want to hear about now. Let's hear about the issues now.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. I want to just congratulate our Fourth of July Committee once again for a wonderful parade. And I know that there was some difficulties with the fireworks. Do either one of you gentlemen want to address what happened with the fireworks?
Mayor and council, there was an industrial accident during the fireworks event. Happened relatively early in the event. Ventura County Fire Department is maintaining jurisdictional responsibility as far as investigation. And we are in the middle of an investigation. So it's just starting, or, or we're just progressing with it. So I don't have a lot to let you know about that. There was one substantial injury. It was from the vendor, who was actually the display vendor. An employee was hospitalized. Notifications were made to Cal OSHA. They had a representative out here at the site the next day doing their part of the investigation as well. Because of HIPAA rules and regulations, I can't give you any detailed information about the injuries that the employees sustained. But they did require overnight stay in the hospital.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions by council?
I have a question. I'm actually going back and forth about whether I should even ask. Because of the ongoing investigations, are there still explosives at the site?
Because of the ongoing investigations, are there still explosives at the site?
The, the, the quick answer is no. And, and to give you the background, the vendor themselves, that, and the pyrotechnicians, apply for a permit to come and travel to their event site. They have the same process to take unused ordinances or, or the, the actual fireworks that have to be returned to the vendor they purchased from. That was done in accordance with the laws, and the vendor handled those ordinances. They were at the site overnight, and really, so that the vendor themselves could kind of regroup and get the right folks there to transport them. So they left the site immediately. Also, I, I should tell you, the state fire marshal is working with us as subject experts in the handling and firework display area. We have cause and origin investigators within our department. We need a little bit of help with these, these specialty items. So we are working closely with the state fire marshal as well.
Thank you.
And, and I should add, there are no evidence or nor thought of foul play or anything like that. Again, we are viewing this right now as an industrial accident.
Thank you. I did, as you heard earlier in the meeting, attend the Solarize Ojai press conference this morning. Steve Bennett and I were there. And I would encourage all the citizens to take a really hard look at, at the potential of utilizing solar panels this go-around. What has happened is the Coalition has done an extensive job in researching and selecting the vendor. And it happens to be an Ojai vendor, has 15 employees here in Ojai. So that it takes the, the mystery or all the work really out of you, if you want to, if you wanted to think about solar panels for your home. You know, there's probably a half a dozen or more vendors that you would have to research yourself and get bids from, and that kind of thing. And what the Coalition has done is actually done that work for us. They have selected who they believe has the best equipment, and they have also negotiated a very good price. And the price also would include financing. So it's, it's a nice package. And I don't think there's going to be a better time than, than now, if somebody wants to try to put solar panels on their house and reduce their electrical consumption. I think it's the, the workshops that the, that the Coalition are going to have, three of them, I think would be very interesting to, very interesting to attend. The other thing is, is I also had an opportunity to participate in and speak at the One Love Fest over the weekend. A very interesting festival that was held at Libby Bowl. I found it to be very enjoyable. I followed a, in my talking, I followed a group of Tibetan monks that are traveling around the country, who put on a, in their full native garb, they put on a kind of a, not a show, but, you know, a ritual, or whatever you would call it, as well as songs. And they had all their headdresses on and things like that. And they travel around, and they, they are not paid. They're just, they do it as a fundraiser, and they ask for donations. And those donations go back to Tibet, where it helps support where the young monks are studying. That was very interesting. I was able to stick around for some of the, some of the bands. They were excellent. The crowd seemed to be orderly. I don't know if there was any problems or not. But it would be something that I would hope. The vendors were nice. I would hope that that would be something that would continue, because it was three days, and they utilized Libby Bowl for the entire time. That's all I have. Mr. Clark?
I wanted to review a, a change in scheduling that we're doing at City Hall, particularly in the Finance Department. As you know, we've had a lot of conversations about how do we get to the 40-hour, five-day work week? And the, the bugaboo is always, it costs a bunch of money. So we did recently have a resignation in the Finance Department of our accountant, and had a vacancy. And so what we're going to do is, rather than fill that vacancy, we're going to increase the hours of all the remaining staff to 40 hours per week, five days per week. And it, it balances exactly the same. This is really being done on a trial basis for the next six months, to see if they can actually get all the work done. But the Finance Department now, along with the Community Development Department, and some of us in the City Managers Department, will be working a 40-hour, five-day week. And so the City Hall hours, which have been eight to six, will be eight to five.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher?
None, sir.
All right. Sergeant Arthur, anything?
Just one quick thing, Mayor Blatt. If you were out at the parade on the Fourth, you might have seen a couple of officers on electric bicycles. And that kind of adds to the cops grant, because that also supplements our foot and bike patrol in the weekend. So we, we have two electric bicycles just for the City of Ojai Patrol. And it, when you look at the dynamics of trying to do enforcement on the, the main drag through town, it gets difficult to maneuver cars. So it'll be, it's a good addition, and the deputies are very excited about it. So you might see them out more often.
All right. Thank you. I don't see any staff in the audience. So do you have anything to add? Madam Clerk?
I do. I just wanted to let you know, I am advertising for the Building Appeals Board that was created by adopting ordinance 829. So it'll be in this Friday's paper, next Friday's paper. If anyone's interested, they should contact me. And then I also wanted to let you know, there is a really nice display of the Solarize equipment and stuff that Deborah put in the lobby. And there's flyers there on the vendors. So I encourage people to come into City Hall and look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from the council? No? Hearing nothing? We stand adjourned.